I want to introduce the people to our right, and Eric, you can introduce the people to your left. To my right, we've got Mr. Judice, who's the principal of Pine Tree Elementary. We have Dr. Alt, who's the principal of Central Valley Elementary.
And Joe Coto, who's the principal of North Main, and Chris Berger, who's the principal at the middle school.
All right.
So, our presentation from the last Board of Education meeting resulted in a variety of different questions being asked and some discussion points. And we first wanted to start by summarizing what the key questions were that were asked for us to come back here to follow up with the board. The first two questions relate to a STAR, the STAR assessment that we administer three times a year. And the first question was, do STAR assessment results indicate the same levels of proficiency as the New York State testing program? That's NYSTP. And the second question is, do STAR assessment results indicate the same gaps between students who are economically disadvantaged and students who are non-economically disadvantaged as indicated in the New York State testing program results that we presented last time?
And then there were, what are the goals for this year? So, in the coming days and weeks and months ahead, what are the goals for 22, 23 as it relates to these assessments? And then how will we address and work towards increasing the level of students of participation and proficiency as reflected on the New York State School report card? You sure?
Not you?
Okay, thanks. So, I just want to, I'll go through these very quickly. This slide was shown last month. It was the scores from grade three through eight in English Language Arts. It has both the proficiency rates, and then the bottom had the participation rates for every grade. And we discussed that a little bit last month. This is, these are the STAR proficiency rates. So, I just want to go through very briefly a few things just to explain what STAR is. STAR, STAR reading is a benchmark that we give to all of our students in grades three through eight, three times a year. It is nationally normed, so it's unlike the New York State ELA test. This is strictly a reading test. There are inherent differences between this assessment and the New York State assessment. Because this is just based on, not only is this just based on reading, it's also what's called an adaptive test. So, it remembers where you, where a student was the last time he or she took the test. And then, as the student progresses, if they, if they get an answer correct, they move on to a harder question. If they get an answer incorrect, it backs down and they ask a different type of question. It's strictly reading. It's presented one passage at a time, so one, one reading, a single reading passage, as opposed to the New York State ELA test, which is typically multiple passages. There are also multiple choice, the New York State test, but there are also short answer and more extended response questions, which is different than the STAR reading benchmark that we give. As far as the proficiency rates, what you'll see here are, these are from last spring. So, right around the same time that the New York State test was administered. The proficiency benchmarks that we use are the ones dictated by the STAR assessment. So, when you look at this, you can see that from our third grade, 75% of our students were proficient or met the proficiency rate on the STAR assessment in grade three. 70% in grade four, 67% in grade five, 67 in grade six, 59 in grade seven, and 57 in grade eight. That's, that's pretty much that, right?
So, similar to what Matt had just spoken about, this is the slide that we showed to the board at the last meeting regarding our June, our, our spring 2022 math proficiency results. Again, grades three through eight, again illustrating what our participation rate was as well. Again, same exact slide as what was given last time. Similarly, we gathered our proficiency results from this spring administration of the STAR math exam in grades three through eight. Proficiencies in, proficiency in third grade was 78%, fourth grade 77%, 75 in fifth, 75 in sixth, 63 in seventh, and 69 in eighth. One other quick point regarding the, the math and, and the STAR math and the STAR reading. The, the computer, the, we had talked a bit about computer-based testing at the last, at the last meeting. And the difference between the STAR exam and the state assessment, as Matt had shared, the STAR assessment is exclusively multiple choice, where on the reading and the ma, and the, the state ELA and the state math exam, the students have an extended response question where they do writing passages on the ELA side. But on the math side, they have extended response questions where there are a series of tools that the students need to use. So, part of the work that we're going to be discussing shortly is how we are preparing the students to continue to take that assessment on the, on the computer. The difference with the STAR math exam is that there is no extended response questions where the students have to manipulate any tools. It is exclusively computations that are done on scrap paper and then multiple choice questions that are transcribed. The STAR math is also adaptive, just like the reading exam, where the student logs in. The exam knows where the student tested previously when they sat and took the exam, and it's adaptive where the questions get more difficult if they get the questions right, and if the questions back off if they get the questions incorrectly.
So, those are the answers to, that was, that was the first question.
Correct.
All right. The second question, just to reiterate, was, do STAR assessment results indicate the same gaps between students who are economically disadvantaged and students who are non-economically disadvantaged as indicated by the New York State testing program?
So, at the last Board of Ed meeting, we also, we shared a slide of a sample analysis that we do when we're looking at data. And one of the things that we do is we do a deeper dive into how some of our different sub-populations do. And the slide that we showed at that time was the comparison of proficiency between our economically disadvantaged students and our non-economically disadvantaged students. And that's what prompted the second question that was asked about the gap that existed between the two. And the question was, do we see a similar gap in our STAR reading results? So, as we go through and we analyze our STAR reading results, we do a very similar gap analysis. This is a sample report of that, where we do, this is of the STAR reading exam, again, in spring of 2022, where we continue to see that gap between our non-economically disadvantaged students and our economically disadvantaged students. So, the darker purple is the proficiency of our economically disadvantaged students, and the lighter purple is the proficiency of our non-economically disadvantaged students. So, that gap that we spoke about last time, in this particular analysis, does continue to exist. So, that was the, the second question that was asked.
So, the, the third question was about the goals. What are the goals for, for this coming year? We focused on two, as indicated earlier. One is regarding participation, and how do we get students to take this assessment? And why do we believe that students should take it? And the second one is based on achievement.
So, and this was something that was discussed at the, the tail end of the presentation last time about the importance of students sitting down and taking the exam. And collectively, when we were preparing this presentation, we all collectively, collectively agreed that, you know, the emphasis of the school district was going to be that the students should sit and take the exam. So, the, the goal itself is that the Monterey School District Administration, with the support of the board, is committed to increasing all efforts for students in grades three through eight to take the exam. First and foremost, that the students will sit and participate in the exam. And the goal is that we will increase the number of students participating on the ELA and math state assessments as cohorts in grades three through four by 5%. Now, what we mean by cohorts in grades four through eight by 5% is we took the number of students that participated as third graders last year, and we will look to see as fourth graders this year, that 5% additional students will participate in taking that state assessment. And that 5% will still continue for students that were fourth graders last year into fifth grade, fifth into sixth, sixth into seventh, and seventh into eighth. Now, third graders will be sitting for the state assessment for the first time. So, we are committed to having at least 88% of third grade students participate in the ELA and math state assessments this year, which aligns with what our participation rate was last year for third grade.
So, three of the people up, up, up here at the table with me, in addition to me, and then a few others, tomorrow, we get to take part in a Crusader chat. And I don't know if anybody wants to plug that? I'm going to, Brian, you want to plug that?
Sure. Yes, tomorrow at 11:30, we'll be speaking live in the meeting, talking about the importance of taking the state assessments and how they are of use to our students, to our schools, to our staff, to the administration, and to the entire school district to help us guide instruction as we move forward. So, it's a really important opportunity for, where this, we're just presenting, and the board has an opportunity to ask us questions. Tomorrow, the community can log in and hear about some of the things we're looking to do to help increase the percentage of students taking the state assessments.
In addition to information about state assessments, it's, it's more than that as well. The focus is on the overall elementary curriculum. So, we'll be talking about reading and math and the other things that are being done in the classroom on a day-to-day basis.
And on February 28th, we're going to have a similar Crusader chat at the middle level. And Chris, if you want to say a few words about that?
Sure. No, it'll be very similar to the elementary, only it'll apply to, you know, the middle school level, obviously beyond the state assessment, but what we're doing is, you know, as far as the curriculum goes, what we're doing to address some of these gaps, and, you know, just what our plan is, you know, moving forward, you know, so that we're able to, to help our students, you know, increase in not only our participation in these state assessments, but also, you know, the proficiency rate, how we're just addressing the needs of all students, not just the ones that are achieving, you know, at a high level, you know, those that are struggling, but, you know, what we're doing to, to address all of our students.
And other ways that we will get the, the news out, there'll be a hot-off-the-press newsletter from, from Mrs. Rodriguez regarding, it's really the higher level things that that newsletter will focus on that, that impact the entire district. In addition to that, we'll be talking about staff training, and some of those look like, do you want to just kind of talk about what some of our trainings could look like?
Sure. Some of our training, some of the work that we're doing with our staffs are now that we're back and we have this data, being able to share the data with our staff, really taking a deeper dive and looking at that and what we can do instructionally for our students. Working also with, we had a cohort of, of staff going through and really looking at through the science, through the science that is going to be coming up with the shifts and changes there as well, as well as with our math, with the new math program that came online this year, looking at and having teachers have the opportunity to get together and have conversations district-wide for the first time in a long time about our math program and making sure that we're aligned across the district.
All right. And then, the last thing that we need to do is we need to continue to communicate with our families from our building leadership in particular. So, Judd, you want to just talk about ways that you could do that?
I guess I'm the last one left, so that's.
You are. That's it.
So, we do struggle with, we, there's a lot of electronic communication going out. That's the new trend, obviously. One of the things we've discovered is some of that doesn't always reach our families as easy as it could. So, we're looking at different methods of that. What, what do they use to communicate with? What are their, how do they receive some of the communication? So, we're trying to look at those ways. We've also looked at things like as simple as our open house. Even though those things have come and gone, we expected a very large turnout at our open houses because we opened our schools back up for the first time after the pandemic, but that wasn't really the case. So, why was that? Our parent-teacher conferences are coming up again in the spring. So, we're looking at when parents are virtual, to have our teachers work with them a little bit more on communication. We have newsletters. We talked about Google Sites, like the high school uses. Now, it's going to be transferred down to the elementary level so that we can kind of bring that up to speed a little bit to communicate with the families. And since Bargav's not sitting here tonight, I can talk about, we do some things at all levels in elementary paper-wise now. Going back to paper report cards, because we were finding out that a very small percentage of our families were actually checking their students' report card at the elementary level. So, we've gone back to paper now, where the traditional method of the envelope goes home. The parents have to sign the envelope, bring the envelope back in, so we know they've actually read the report card and are seeing what their children are doing.
And one of, one of the great benefits of being online, when you, when you present a report card to families, is you can, we know as a district, who clicked on the report card and who didn't, who read it and who didn't. And when we dove deeper into that, that information and that data earlier in the school year, we realized it wasn't enough. Not enough parents were, were reading their report cards at the elementary level. And that is exactly right. That's why we decided to go back to a paper-based report card. Now, it still lives in the electronic world for those parents who, you know, read it. But teachers in particular felt that there was, it was really important for a child to go home, hand the envelope to, to their parent or guardian, get it signed off, and then have that returned so that they knew that, you know, the information was being seen.
And it becomes a communication tool back and forth with the parent, too. When you're speaking to them, if you call the parent to chat about their child or whatever, you can refer to that report card, and you obviously know the parent has actually read it at that point, as opposed to being virtual.
And I think ultimately, there's never one direct avenue that's going to be the success and the answer to all of this. And I think that that's kind of what we're trying to show, is that between, you know, the people that are watching this presentation right now at, at home, and the Crusader chat, and the newsletter from the superintendent, and the communication that's going home with the building principals, that the message is going to be collective about the importance of everybody sitting down and participating in the exams. So, I think it's just the, the group of us kind of devising the best way to get the word out and as many different methods as we can to kind of reinforce that, that goal.
So, from an achievement standpoint, what our overarching goal will be to increase the number of students reaching proficiency on the ELA and math assessments as cohorts in grades four through eight by 10%. And what that means is not if they scored at 45%, as, if fourth grade scored at 45% last year, the goal isn't that next year, fifth grade will score 55%. What it will be is, we have to look at the individual numbers of students who are taking the assessments, and then we break that down, and we'd say 10% of the students who are taking, who are proficient, we would have an increase of 10% in, in that number. So, that's how we broke that down. One of the ways that we, we hope to achieve that is we instituted a change for, in our, in our computer-based testing model. As indicated last, at last month's meeting, every student in grades three through eight last year took both the ELA assessment and the math assessment on, on the computer. We decided, as, as a team, to, to change that. And let me just show you what that looks like for this coming year and then the years beyond. Because we didn't want to just go back to paper, you know, wholeheartedly, because that's not going to adequately prepare our students for the, for the coming years when there's no choice. So, what we decided is for this year, there will be paper-based tests. Grades three in ELA, and there's also, what's not on there, grades seven and eight ELA will all be paper-based. Grades three through eight in math will also be paper-based. And we talked about some of the challenges that go along with taking a math assessment and, you know, what it takes to prepare a student to take a math assessment on a computer last month. The computer-based tests, grades four, five, and six for the ELA will take it on the computer. We felt that, as, as the leadership team, that taking our, the ELA test was, those students had already taken it, and some of those students have already taken it multiple times. You don't have to manipulate the computer or the tracking pad the way you do with, with a math assessment. So, we decided to keep the grades four through six on the computer for next year.
And I think one of the things that we shared at the last Board of Ed meeting was that the original rollout of the CBT plan for the school district started out with this year's sixth-grade cohort when they were in third grade. They were the first group of students to take it CBT. So, basically, fourth, fifth, and sixth are students who have only taken the state assessment on the computer. So, it didn't make sense to revert back to paper for them, which is the reason why it's fourth, fifth, and sixth being computer-based for this year.
And then it has the subsequent years on there as well. Just one, one point to note, with grade five and grade eight math next year being computer-based, there's a, a new science assessment that's coming out next year. It'll be administered in fifth grade and eighth grade. Computer-based is the only option. They don't have a paper option at this point. Now, New York State may say, you know, ah, guess what? We're going to give a paper option at the last minute because, I know you'll be shocked to hear this, but they've done that before, and we're living that now with our NICE SLAT tests. But we want to, again, give our, our students a little more practice with, with the computer-based testing.
And this also, this, once, last second, this also aligns with the state mandates in terms of when they are expecting everybody to be fully CBT. The 25, 26 school year is when the state has established that all, all assessments are expected to be administered on the computer. And again, that, that, that schedule may very well change down the line, but as of right now, this follows the, the sequence in terms of what they're expecting for us in order to be able to participate in.
I think one of the things that, that these, these tests and the results of them have certainly spurned conversation as far as the importance of knowing where our students are in terms of their performance. I just want to make sure that I'm clear, though, that from, from our role here, you know, I know neither of us are interested in creating, you know, assessment machines. We don't want our students to be only assessed, over-assessed, and make it all about being assessed. That is not our goal. But I, you know, the New York, in the New York State assessments, they're just one, they're one benchmark. You know, just like our STAR is a benchmark, this is one, you know, point in time where our students take a test. However, we do want to create opportunities to gather information because, like I said, you know, at the last, last month, we need to know and, and better, you know, better understand how our students are doing, what their needs are. And then subsequently, we need to know what the needs of our, our teachers and our, our staff are. And, you know, there'll be some people who say, oh, 10% of the students who are proficient, you know, that's, that's a lofty goal. That's hard. We've talked about this as a leadership team. You got, you have, we have to shoot for something. We don't want to just look, you know, keep a low threshold and say, eh, we'll kind of do it by 2% or 1%. And we want to put things in place that, that best impact our kids. And our job when we do that is to support our staff and to support our teachers and to make sure that they have what they need in order to do that. And we talked about that a little bit last month. Tomorrow is one of our examples. Tomorrow's a busy day here at the Ed Center. We have the, the Crusader chat, which Mr. Judice spoke about. And I know you'll all be tuned in, and I know you'll all be tuned in at 11:30. But the other thing that's occurring in this building tomorrow is a meeting of what we call our Joint Standing Committee. And by contract, the MWTA has a clause in their contract that allows that if there is a, a concern, an area where that they want to discuss that impacts, you know, their members, they can, they can, you know, reach out to our superintendent and request a meeting for our Joint Standing Committee. We're doing something a little bit different that we don't typically do. You know, Mrs. Rodriguez reached out to the union to say, you know what? We want, we want to bring that, that meeting together. We want to bring that group together to basically discuss how we can collaborate and continue to collaborate as a district, to discuss what the needs of our, our teaching staff are and how we can best, best meet them and how we can best work together, work together, right? I think I covered pretty much that.
Mr. Kravitz, I just have a quick question.
Sure.
The 10%, you said it is of proficiency. So, what would that look like? Because you said it's not the 45% going to 55%. So, how, how do we visualize what, what that looks like?
So, I think the, the best way to, and before I get that, the reason we did only four through eight is because our third graders will be taking it for the first time. So, we don't have anything to really compare that, that growth to. But the way we looked at it is, when you, when you are proficient, in order for a student to go from not proficient to proficient, they need to make over a year's worth of growth. So, it's, it's not as if they were just, hey, look, you were at a two last year with a scale score of, I don't know, 500, whatever the number is, and then next year, you're going to be at a two, and you're also going to have a scale score of 500. That's a year's worth of growth, and we want our students to grow by at least a year. Our expectation is that we will have, you know, at least 10% of our students who reach proficiency to, to go beyond that. And what that would look like would be if we have 200 students who take the, the assessment in a particular grade level. If, or if 200 of those students are proficient on a particular grade level, we would then have an additional 20 students above the, the 200 from this year compared to, to next year who would reach, you know, the proficiency milestone, so, or marker. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
And the importance of calculating it at the, by cohort is because you're talking about the same population of students, where you don't want to compare fourth grade to fourth grade because this year's fourth grade is going to be a brand-new group of students compared to last year. So, you want to make sure that when you're tracking student growth, you're tracking it in a way where it's the same populations of kids from the previous year. And similar to what Matt said, the way that the state assessment works, when they sit and take the fourth grade exam, the fifth grade exam is scaffolded based upon the fifth grade standards. So, it's, it's anticipating a full year's worth of growth. So, to get a student from not proficient to proficient is more than a full year's worth of growth because they were not performing at grade level the previous year. Then they would be in excess of grade level, so it's, it's beyond that year's worth of growth. But you want to make sure that you're talking about the same population of students in order to predict what that growth will look like. I hope that makes sense, the way that I explained it.
It does. So, if I'm understanding correctly, the fourth grade class last year will be compared to the fifth grade class.
That's exactly, right. They will be.
They're moving up.
That is exactly right. We, we will be looking at the results of how that population of students performed last year, what the number of proficient students was last year, and comparing it to how they, how that same group performs in the subsequent year's test this year.
Now, I don't recall, at the last presentation, was the exact numbers of proficiency provided? I don't recall the presentation.
What, we, we gave the percentage of overall students who participated. We didn't give the actual number of students, but we can certainly provide that, too.
Okay.
We can send that out.
That would be great.
Yep.
So, the, I have two questions on the, on the tests. These are the state tests.
Yep.
So, what would be, is there a plan that if the state does away with the tests, like they've done in the past, do we have a way to administer comparable tests?
Do you want to take it on your own?
Sure. Yeah, so there, and I think in various versions of this presentation over the years, you've heard me say from time to time that the state has established a new benchmark. For example, I, I don't know if I mentioned the last time or not, but there were a number of years where the state assessment was administered over three days. And then, I think that was pre-2018, I think 2018, 2019, sometime around there, the state went back to administering it over two days. And they basically said at that time, you cannot do a comparison of, because this is essentially a new test compared to the, the test previously. So, ultimately, what will happen is, we would have to start fresh. But then that's where, it, it kind of goes back to what Matt had said earlier. This is only one little piece of the overall picture. That's when we would go back to looking at how students are performing on the common assessments that are being administered internally, including the STAR exam. So, even though the STAR exam is not a direct correlation identically of you're proficient on the state assessment and you're proficient on this, there is a predictability between the two in terms of how the students perform on the STAR and how they perform on the state assessment.
But, but they do map to standards, right?
The STAR exam is a skill-based test. The state assessment maps directly to the state.
I see.
Yes.
I'm seeing.
Yes. And, and that's the reason why when, when Matt had said that the STAR exam is a nationally-normed exam, it's administered across, across the entire country, and they norm it accordingly to every single student who takes the exam, not just New York State.
Well, we did just, just so you know, we did just purchase or, we had access to a package through STAR. And we did just enhance that, that package, which would allow for, which will allow our teachers to monitor progress on a more frequent basis than just the three-time benchmarking. Those, those questions are standards, are standards-based, which is a good thing. And then the common assessments, and then the common assessments that have been and will be created, such as, you know, using previous New York State tests, those are also obviously, you know.
And, and is there a plan to move from cohort to individual assessment?
So, I, I think, well, I think the whole, the ultimate goal would be to create, and then we talked, I think we talked about this last time, was, is really to create these profiles of individual learners. So that, and I, I think I was, what I said last time was, that's what, we need to do that. Our kids need that, our, our staff needs to have that. So that, you know, if you're student A, we know what your needs are and so that we can best meet them. But that's ultimately, that's the.
And there, there's also, we've, we've heard discussions at the state level where the state is talking about the gradual evolution of the state exam could potentially be moving to an adaptive exam. So.
Which is, which will be a, a major shift.
Right.
Right. But obviously, we don't have great luck with the state, so.
Right. And, and we can only plan on the information that we're being given at this moment in time, and, and we got to adjust.
And at the end of the day, the, the state, you know, like I said earlier, this, what these results do is they kind of kick, kick, you know, kick things into overdrive a little bit, which is a.
That's great.
I don't think is a bad thing.
Fantastic.
But it gets us to become more laser-focused on, you know, the things that are up on there.
This is really good.
Yeah. Is it possible that one of the factors in the economically disadvantaged students being lower? Could that be their lack of exposure to computers as opposed to more?
So, I, I don't, I don't know if we have that information. I will say that.
But it could be a factor.
It could be. At the same time, all of our students have been fully one-to-one now for a, a number of years. So, you know, a student comes in, they're, they're given a Chromebook. How they manipulate that and how they use, how they use that.
Oh, right. They bring it home with them, right?
Right. But how they're best instructed on them, you know, is again, something we, we have to continue to look at. You know, what is the, what are the expectations for the number of words per minute a student can type, you know, versus? And that's, that's hard. You know, you have a third grader who, you know, last year, for the first time, and I don't want to speak for the building principals, but I, I think everyone will attest to, that's challenging for a student to, you know, be able to look at a passage, look at multiple passages, compare passage one to passage two, and then type out an extended response.
Are you testing them on their keyboarding skills, or are you testing them on fucking knowledge at that point?
Correct.
When they're at that age?
Exactly. At any age.
And then, and then the professional development, which is in, you know, will be in collaboration with the, with the teachers as well, is, is a major, is a major part of all of this. And ultimately, at the end of the day, instruction to standard, standards and skills using data is of utmost, utmost importance. But supporting and enhancing the tier-one instruction, the, the instruction that all of our students get in, in every general ed classroom is really what the focus needs to be and will be.
And that, that was something that was talked about at the last Board of Ed meeting, where tier-one instruction is what happens at the classroom level. The whole focus of this is about equipping our teachers with that information on how to best be able to support the kids on a day-to-day basis within the classroom.
Hey, also, Ed, that we, with our fourth and fifth graders taking the ELA on the computer, we all agreed to have our. to have our fourth and fifth grade students, uh, when we come back from midwinter break, to take the 2022, uh, ELA assessment, to have them have five weeks after that date to kind of look at, what did they struggle with? What were things that they, that they had difficulty with? To give that last boost before that assessment.
And it's not a full assessment because the state doesn't release every question from last year. You know, they, they embed fake question, or, you know, oh, you know, field test kinds of questions to see, oh, could a student answer it, not answer it? Those are all removed when they release the question. So this is a much shorter assessment, but should give all of us an overall better understanding of how our kids should be able to perform.
It's really impressive.
From, from April.
I have, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I have questions for the Crusader Chat, so a little bit of questions, a little bit of feedback. Um, will the performance, that's performance, the Crusader Chat be taped tomorrow and made available on the website?
It will. And will it also allow us to do, is it allow us to cut out snippets of information so that as we continue to evolve in how we, you know, relay information to our family and to our community, you know, I, I know you'll, you know, not everyone has time to listen to an hour, you know, or an hour and a half presentation.
Right.
They'll be allowed to or able to because it will be recorded, but it will allow us to take some of the more pertinent components of it and then, you know, allow us to then say, all right, here's something that we thought was really important about a potential reading program. So you know what, hey, folks, check this out, and then we'll, we'll have that.
Okay, so that'll be on, hopefully, what's tomorrow, Thursday? So hopefully by Friday? I mean, is there-
Yes.
Yes.
No pressure. I just, you know. I'm just, I'm just replaying the questions that I get.
People are going to be very eager to watch it.
Okay.
There's awards even, so I can-
Yes. These are just, it's just the feedback that I get. Okay, so that's good. And then I think some of the feedback that I had in regards to some of the communications, I mean, coming from a parent, I think it's, I think we've come a long ways. So I think the communication that we've gotten has improved drastically. I think, again, some of the feedback that I get from the community is building to building is where there's like some discrepancy still and how we're utilizing some of the systems that, you know, Mr. Coto mentioned. Um, you know, it's difficult. I, I don't know what the answer is. Again, I'm just kind of providing the feedback that sometimes we're getting bombarded with too many text messages, which kind of desensitizes us as a parent. Um, you know, unless it's like a lockdown emergency, it should be an email.
We talked about that yesterday.
Can I just answer that question?
Sure.
Because I, I heard the same thing. And what I've heard is that, that we have a little bit of a glitch in our system. What do you, why are you looking at me? No, we have a little, we have a glitch, and I think that you're getting multiple text messages for the same thing and there may be an issue.
I'm not referring to that, but I have heard that that's a problem, but I, that's not happening to me.
But in addition to, in addition to that, we, our administrator, our administrative team yesterday, um, heard, well, the, the building leaders heard for the first time yesterday that this is what the superintendent's going to be doing as far as the newsletter. The expectation from the school district is for our individual buildings also on a monthly basis, starting in, you know, we, we have, we have to play around with it and get them to understand the nuances of it, but starting at, at the end of, or the start of next year-
Start of September.
-there would be a monthly newsletter from their buildings as well, covering, using a template, so we know that everyone's going to have a curricular focus, you know, as part of it. There's going to be a PTA focus, there's going to be a one-stop shop for information. It may not, it may not cover every single thing that might be covered in a text message, but it would still allow for parents to go back and say, yep, they told me about this, here's, here's the calendar for, for the month, and, you know, here's the information.
And I think that by centralizing it, it reduces the need for the frequency of things that are going out. If you, if you consolidate it well into one centralized location, it doesn't have to be repeated, you know, we talked about just the, the email with the PDF that then gets lost in your inbox and you're like, where was that? And then you're trying to sift through it, even if you do a search for North Main Elementary School, you might see X number of emails that are in there and you're trying to figure out where it is, to reduce that into one centralized location where you know where to go no matter what the question is related to any of the items that might have been sent out.
And the goal would be the combination of pertinent information, you know, and getting our parents and families in the buildings and understanding what's going on, but also selling our school district because there are a lot of really great things going on in these, these buildings. And, you know, I, we could do presentations, I know you would all love to hear that over and over and over again about all the great things, but it, it's our job to continue to let the community know what those great things are, and we're continuously looking at ways to, to do that.
And we have to be careful not to overuse it to a certain thing. That's what happened, you know, and what you're saying. There's so many emails that go out after a while, it's like you said. Unless it has, you know, something in the title, in the subject line that grabs your attention, it's just another email. We have phone calls, lots of times we'll call parents, they see the missed call, they, we left a voicemail. They don't check the voicemail, they just call us back and say, North Main called you. Well, let me see where it came from, because it was me, the nurse, it was, it was a teacher. They're just inundated with so much, I think. So we have to really be smart in what we send out and how often we do.
And understanding the viewing habits of, of people and, and community members, you know, one of the things, when we look at the, the Google, um, extension that we'd be using for this, we can tell who's looked at it, how long they've been on it, um, you know, if somebody's-
God, he's spying up in here now. I just said that to Jeff. I was like, I gotta go home and open my damn report card now, I'm under pressure.
We can check. Check right now. We can check right now.
I haven't opened it.
But it's different at the secondary because your grades are updated and you know how your students are doing, your, your child is doing, so it's a little bit different, but.
And the email only came out today, so, so you-
So I have a little time. I get 24 hours.
You, you, it don't, don't, yes, it's not, you know, it's only been a couple of hours.
Yeah, no pressure.
Anthony, you had a question?
No, you guys covered it. Thanks.
I'll throw you one last one.
Awesome.
With the discrepancy with the scores for the STAR assessment versus the ELA and the math, is there a different assessment or diagnostic tool that we should be looking at that gives a more accurate reflection? Because if you look at the, at the STAR data, you, you might say to yourself, I, you know, I'm getting, you know, 75% of my kids are proficient. And then when it comes to the actual ELA or the math, the results are drastically different. Is it lulling people into a false sense of, of, you know, confidence? Is there another alternative that would be more accurately reflective of the state assessments to better prepare and better guide teachers to, you know, focus instruction?
I can speak to that. I, I think part of the goal of this, and, and that's, some of the discussion is about the computer-based testing, and I think that it was something that I had mentioned at the end of the last presentation, is making sure that the state assessment is a true indication of how our kids are doing. And I think even, you know, we, we all met with the teachers to, last week, to share all of this information with them, to update them in terms of where we are. And the teachers were like, I think many of the teachers' response was, okay, going back to paper, at least for now, will be a more indication of how the kids are doing because they're more adept at taking it on the paper than they are on the computer.
But, but to, to just further answer that, there are, there are guidelines for the, the benchmarks that we're allowed to use from a New York State level. They have to be nationally normed, they have to be, you know, they have to hit a series of criteria. And I think what we're, to, to, to kind of go back to what, what Don had said, our goal is to put other things in place so that ultimately we have a better understanding of how our students are doing, you know, on a day in and day out.
Before you even get to the assessment.
Before we-
Before this assessment.
So are there other things, are there, so that we can, we can look at? Yeah, yes, there, there are. Um, you know, and as we continue to, to review our curriculum in, in general, particularly with, with reading and to determine, you know, and to ask our teachers how the, the math program is, is going for them, that information will be, be helpful to determine what, what path we go.
And I think Brian had mentioned earlier about the, having the students sit and take chunks of the old state assessments. What he was speaking about was really more at the elementary level because elementary teachers have their students for a large chunk of the day and they have a, a greater chunk of time in order to be able to administer assessments like that. It's a little bit different at the middle level where in, in having conversations with the teachers, it's hard for them to say, I'm going to administer, you know, session one from the 2018 exam, which is a, a large chunk of time when they only see the kids for 40 minutes a day. So the common assessments that they're doing at the elementary level compared to the common assessments at the middle school, they're working on creating assessments aligned to the material that they're teaching at that particular time, where they can do online a search of old state, you know, if they're working on Pythagorean theorem and math, they can do a search in the tool that we use that, that mirrors the state assessment portal for old state assessment questions in the Pythagorean theorem and assign them to the kids and see how the kids are doing directly linked to the standards that have been assessed on old state assessments on that skill. So they have the, the ability to be able to see how the kids are doing, linked directly to the way that they're going to be assessed on the exam, and, you know, provide support for the kids at that particular time. Does that, does that make sense of the way that, yeah?
See, the, the two items that you brought up to me are align instruction to standards and skills, and then the progress monitoring. And I'm assuming to, to Dan's point, if those things show a discrepancy, you're going to constantly look at ways to understand why there's a discrepancy and you might change things to-
And to, and to give our, our teachers, you know, intervention strategies in, in real time, that's ultimately the-
And the last meeting we presented on a timeline, it, it was review data, like reviewing data was almost like throughout the entire timeline because it's constantly curriculum modification, providing student supports and, you know, making those adjustments along the way.
Do you want to just speak a little bit about the work that Ms. Cook did in, at Smith-Clove, just to give everyone an idea of kind of the work, some of the work that is being done?
Sure. So in our, our building principals, and I think that, again, I don't want to speak for them, but I think it's been very clear to all of our leadership team, the importance of information, right? And, um, one of the things that we're, we wanted, we want to know is, when we have students in our, in our class, who is in our student, who is in our classrooms? How often are they in our classrooms? You know, if we have kids who are constantly pulled out for extra support services, and is that the best, as, as we make decisions in terms of, of how to best support students, is that the best model? Should we constantly be pulling kids out to say, oh, you're going to go to an, an IAS class? No, now you're going to go to the ENL teacher, now you're going to go to this teacher or that teacher? One of the things that they did at Smith-Clove, and that template will be shared with the other buildings, is, you know, Ms. Cook, what she did, she asked her teachers, break it down in literally in five-minute increments, let's walk through your day, and let's talk about academic time, non-academic, academic time, um, transfer time, so when you're walking from, you know, classroom to recess, or how is your time best utilized? So what you, what we, one of the things that, that revealed itself is there are classrooms in, there are a handful of first-grade classes that have, you know, their entire class for, you know, less than half an hour a day, less than 20 minutes a day, less than 15 minutes at, at some point. So as classroom teachers, you know, everybody wants to help their student, right? But if their kids aren't in their room, it's really hard to do that if they're not there. Now, they are, those kids are working with wonderful professionals when they're, when they're pulled out, but I think, again, it goes, comes back to what we said last time was, that often could lead to instructing in silos. And, you know, people, a, a reading teacher, an ENL teacher, a classroom teacher, working on their own, through no fault of their own, just because that's kind of how the, the structure is set up, but it will allow us to review, and that's just an example. Thank you for bringing that up.
Right. And I, I think one of the things that was a great indicator was that she took a look at the data she collected from the teachers and then took a look at a cohort of students that had taken, I believe it was the STAR reading or some assessment, and realized a group of students didn't do well. When, when she took that group of students and looked at them in the classroom teacher in the context of that, they were missing that period because they were being pulled out for something else. So that was like an aha moment. So I think that's one of the things that we're doing is that when we take a look at data, there are things that we may not have noticed and then begin to notice and, and able to make change. So I thought that was, that was a, a really good point.
And I have, I can't stress enough, we are not, as a district leadership team, coming at this from a gotcha standpoint. For our, our teachers, for our students, for our building principals, that is not our, the way we're coming at this. Our, we're coming at this from, let's understand the needs of our students. How do we best know that, you know, what their needs are? How do we know the needs of the teachers? What questions do we have to ask our teachers so that then we can get them what they need? And ultimately, I said it last time, it's our job to support them. And it's, you know, Eric and I, it's our job to support the people to our right and left and in the audience, and then subsequently, it's our job to support the, the rest of our staff.
We, we refer to your model as an agile model. And, and the term means constant improvement as opposed to measuring, like you did bad, or it's like, how do I constantly help you improve?
It's about measuring growth, you know? So it's not just about measuring one score in, at a particular time, but we need to know what we're measuring, we need to know how to, how to measure it, and then we need to know where to house all that information so that we're not wasting time trying to find out the information about a student, so that we can get that information into everybody's hands as quickly as we can.
I had one follow-up question, sorry, for the, in regards to the Crusader Chat. Do you know how many questions you were submitted for, for tomorrow?
We didn't do it that way.
Okay.
So, so I think it's, it's kind of a risk, right? We, we've been in, we've been in positions.
You would think we would have done it that way.
No, no, we didn't. It's one of those-
Let's show you what I know. You're not going back to Facebook Live, are you?
No, we are not. It's not, wait.
So I will say, after that Facebook Live event, I, I did call Eric and say, just, you know, I'd never thought there was such a thing as a curriculum emergency, but I think there is now. Um, and, no, so it won't be Facebook Live, it won't be, you know, peppering with questions. You know, if they want to ask a question, they could use the chat feature or they could raise their hand. And the other difference with Facebook is you don't always need to have a, a face to the name or a name to the face or, or however you want to frame it.